Welcome to season two of the Panther Podcast. We're continuing to tell the story of the Panthers, which are the faculty, administration, student body, alumni, and community who make up the Brookhaven School District in Brookhaven, Mississippi. In addition to the new episodes hosted by Superintendent Dr. Rod Henderson, you'll also enjoy behind the scenes documentary episodes along with promotional and educational videos that showcase various departments. Everything you see and hear are noteworthy pieces to the huge puzzle making up the Brookhaven School District. Watch, listen, and enjoy as the story continues into the 2024-2025 school year.
Hello everyone and welcome to the latest episode of the Panther Podcast. I'm Dr. Rod Henderson, Superintendent of the Brookhaven School District, and I have the honor and the pleasure today of having as my guest the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and the school board, Ms. Tracy Williams. How you doing Tracy?
I'm good, Dr. Henderson.
I'm excited about this episode because now you don't have the opportunity to get to know the person behind everything. Tracy makes everything run right in the district and she does a great job. So I wanted to make sure that I brought her on so we could talk about who she is and just give us a background of what she does from day to day, just to pull back the curtain a little bit. So of course, as always, I want to start off with asking you, tell us about yourself, your background, where you're from. Just tell us what you want us to know.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep it short and simple.
You don't have to give us everything.
So I'm originally from Franklin County. I graduated from Franklin High School in 1984. And I'm from a, I think, considered a big family. There are a total of seven of us, six boys and one girl. And no, six girls and one boy. As my brother would say, the intention was to be six boys and one girl, but it's six girls and a boy. Yeah, he was only planned child.
And he has a nice name?
His name is Roderick also.
Can't get any better than that. It doesn't get any better than that. But go ahead.
But anyway, so I attended Kapaua Lincoln Community College and then went on and finished up at University of Southern Mississippi, where I met my husband of almost thirty-five years, come this August. Yes, and we have two daughters and one granddaughter and one grandson.
That's awesome. Now, I didn't realize you all had been married for thirty-five years.
Almost thirty-five years, yes sir.
First Sergeant David Williams, who's ROTC, Junior ROTC Instructor at the high school, right?
That's correct.
Otherwise known as Gilbert.
That's correct.
Now, you have a twin.
I have a twin, Stacy, of course, and we are fraternal. And we are like night and day, so, but I do love her dearly.
So I mentioned your twin one time. I believe she came by the office and walked in the office. I was like, hmm, Tracy's looking different today. You know, Tracy's hair is different.
But that was actually Frances.
Oh, that was, oh wow, really?
Yes, she's the second daughter, but we do.
So you look more like Frances than your actual twin.
Absolutely.
That's amazing.
And Frances is four years older than me, but we look more like than my twin.
So where do you fall in there as far as the family is concerned?
Okay, so there are seven and with the twins, I was born first. So we are four and five. And my brother's number six and the baby girl who came later is number seven.
So you're older than your twins?
I am older than my twin by five minutes. Yes, I do.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
Yes.
I'm sure you do. So now, let's go back some. You were, he's military, First Sergeant's military, so you all were in different places. So talk about some of the places that you all, you know, have lived.
Well, nothing exciting. He traveled out of the country. I am one of those who don't want to go out of the country. I'm happy being in the United States of America. And so, but we met at USM my last semester. He was stationed there a year, maybe two years later. We were married. Went to Fort Bragg, North Carolina for about total of four years. And then he was transferred to Fort Polk, Louisiana.
Familiar with that?
And then we did about four years there and then we went on to Kentucky. Why can't I recall the name of?
A lot of places, so.
Yeah, the main one, it's the biggest one, but I cannot recall. I'm embarrassed. But anyway, we did eight years there and he retired while he was in the war was that, that last one, Iraqi War, the Iraqi War. And come back, stayed for a year in Kentucky and we decided it was time to come home, which is home here for him, Brookhaven. And there you have it.
So all that entails with being the wife of a person who's in the military, it's a lot of responsibility.
It is.
You're holding down home and things like that. You're making sure everybody's good. You have your two girls, making sure they're fine and so on. So in that type of lifestyle there, how did that affect you in itself, you know?
Well, you know, you find out that you're stronger than you think, you know? And that the main thing that you want to do as a military spouse is have, make them comfortable enough to know that you can hold it down while they're gone, because they have enough to worry about. And it was, it was nice, you know? You meet a lot of people from a lot of different walks of life and everybody has that one common theme, you know, the spouses do in that we have someone that's in the military and someone that travels a lot and gone a lot, because First Sergeant Williams was gone a lot. And so, you know, you make friends and your kids become friends and it's pretty, it's a pretty nice life. It really is.
So you form your own little circle.
You form your own little circle.
And you all are like a support mechanism to each other.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, before you came to work here in the district, you worked in banking.
Yes.
You're still in banking, you know?
A total of eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
Yes. Oh man, and it was, I really loved banking because I loved people. I loved what I did. It was something, the day was different all the time.
I'm sure it was.
And so, you know, with him traveling a lot, you know, moving, we're, they call it PCS move. Banking was, I always knew I could get a job at the bank if I wanted to work. And so, that's what I did up until even when I came here. I was, I'm like, I'm gonna go back to work part-time. Plans were we were gonna sit out. He and I both said, let's sit out six months to a year, you know, let's get settled. Well, we got bored pretty fast. And so.
I can't see First Sergeant sitting out anything.
No. I mean, he was volunteering. He did. He stayed pretty busy. And so I'm like, I'm just gonna go over here to State Bank downtown and see what they have. Well, they had a part-time position in Monticello.
Okay.
I'm like, I don't know if I want to drive to Monticello. But, you know, Virginia Earl said, Tracy's like a twenty-minute drive. So I'm like, okay, and that's what I did for a year. I drove to Monticello and worked the drive-through and I loved it. I gained like twenty-five pounds because they can cook in Monticello, okay? And I put a request in to come back because at the time, I'm not sure if the four-way stop was completed, the four-way at highway. And so, the log trucks and all, so after a year, I kind of like, I'm over it. Let's, I'm gonna get back to Brookhaven. And then I came to the drive-through on the Boulevard. And one day I got a call from, I can't think of his last name, but it was Fur. I can't think of it. And he said, would you like to come do customer service? Work customer service for me downtown? I'm like, sure. And went downtown and worked customer service. While down there, somebody came in there and said, hey, would you like to come work for the Brookhaven School District? And that's how I ended up at the Brookhaven School District. And that's been almost eighteen years. Come July thirtieth, I would be here eighteen years.
Eighteen years. That's a long time.
A long time.
That's a long time. So now, we'll fast forward up. Now you're in the district and your first stint in the district, well, only stint in the district so far, was under Mr. Tillman?
I came in under Mr. Tillman. He was Deputy Superintendent and I was his secretary and the athletic secretary. Did that until Ms. Tillman retired. And Dr. Stephanie Henderson.
Somebody I know.
Somebody you know.
Just a little bit.
She didn't come in as Dr. Stephanie Henderson. She became there a few years later, but anyway.
I charmed her.
You charmed her.
I courted her.
And so she came in as our testing director, Director of Assessment and Accountability. Yeah, she initially came in as Sped Director, but when she came to the central office, she came in as Director of Assessment and Accountability.
Correct. Sure did.
And man, I absolutely loved it. I loved working for Ms. Henderson because she was, I learned so much.
You don't have to place such a big emphasis on that. I know I'm not her. I'm not, you know, but I know.
I learned so much.
Y'all know why she puts such a big, I'm not that hard to work with.
He's not at all. Too different, you know, enjoying both.
Go ahead and finish talking about her.
Anyway, worked for Dr. Henderson, I don't know, was it four years? And then she became interim for a year.
She became interim for a year, then she did deputy for a year.
Then she did deputy for a year. So, so I think there was a total of about six.
Yeah, it was, it was just about the entire time I was, I was a principal for seven years because I replaced her. So it was about six or seven years, yes.
And then surprisingly, he replaced Mrs. Henderson.
This guy.
Who, at that time, when he replaced her, she was Dr. Henderson.
Yes.
I mean, you know, I think I have worked for some great people and some awesome athletic directors. So I just had a fantastic, I was in a, to me, a perfect place because I worked for the Deputy Superintendent. You know, Steph eventually became Deputy Superintendent. Worked for three of those. I had three athletic directors. Let me see, it was Tucker Peevy. Then it was a small stint with Henderson, I can't, Wade Henderson. And then Tommy Clopton. And then a little bit for Tucker before Dr. Henderson became Superintendent of the Brookhaven School District.
We slid on down the hallway.
Slid on down the hallway.
Different role, you know?
Different role, more challenging, which I love, you know?
Well, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Let's get into the role because the role is different.
Yes, sir.
The role is, is, is challenging. But go back to when you talk about working in banking. And I think that's one, I think that's one thing that really benefits you is the fact that you did work in banking in the area of customer service. We all know that you're dealing with, dealing with other people's money and things like that. So you have to be, you know, have the best, the best attitude that you can have.
That's right, that's right.
In dealing with that. But you come over to, into this field and you use the same skills.
Absolutely.
Because what I think people need to understand, you're not just, a major part of what you do is making sure the board agenda is, which is a major part. You all have to, if you knew what all went into making, make sure the board agenda was complete, that takes up almost ninety percent of the time.
It does.
It's a lot of stuff. And this is every month. So, and I won't steal your thunder on that. I'll let you talk about that. But having the skill that it takes as far as customer service is concerned is something that she excels at. I will say that. Because when people call and have issues and things like that, Tracy's able to, first of all, calm them down or take the information as for what it is and then make sure that we have all the information that we can, we can get regarding that. But she does a wonderful job in being able to deal with people directly. And I think that comes from your, first of all, who you are, but it also comes from your days in banking.
Yes, sir. I do agree with that. And that was one of the reasons why how I ended up at the central office in the place was the customer service skills and the ability to account a lot of money. But it is so important, you know? When I worked for Bank of America, at the bottom of my check stub, it had, brought to you by your customer. You know, even now that makes me, I get a little fool from just saying it. You know, it reminds me that I cannot have this job without people, you know? And I, I use that here, you know, it's the same thing here. It's just saying, at the bottom of my paycheck, I know it's brought to me by everybody that walks through that door and everyone that I work with inside this building, the community, the students. Everybody takes, to make it all work and it takes all of us to make this whole thing work.
One thing I really like about Tracy is she has no problem filling in what she's needed. You know, there's no, I'm, I'm here, this is what I do and that's all I'm gonna do. No, Tracy fills in everywhere, every gap that we need, she fills in it. And that's the type of culture that I'm trying to build, I want a building that we have, is it's one for all and all for one. As it says, we're stronger together. So when somebody is, is needing you to stand in the gap for them, that's exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna do those things. No one is above anything, you know? Central office, this is central office and things like that, that means nothing. That means nothing. If a principal called me right now and said, I can't get a cell. I need someone in history class. I'm certified in history. Let's go. Let's go. I'm stepping back into the classroom, you know? I have not forgotten how to, how to teach, you know? I'm here to help in any way possible and Tracy has that same attitude. But what I want you to do is kind of walk us through, it's just briefly. What it takes, because I want people to understand this. What it takes to put a board packet together, to prepare for a board meeting. Just a general board. We're not even talking about the special call meetings and the work sessions and things like that. But just a general board meeting.
That one monthly meeting that we have every month. It really starts the day after the last monthly meeting.
That's, that's true.
So we meet on April twenty-second for our regular board meeting. The next agenda starts building on April twenty-third. Because we're getting, there are things that we have to have, we do, we have to do every month, has to be in the packet. So we already start building that agenda from that point. And then on top of that, anything that comes up that's new, that has to be presented, that comes from a booster, a principal, a director. It has to go in that packet. And so that packet starts building right there and we have to, time has to be managed very tightly because mostly every, mostly every month we have personnel.
That's right.
And we have to get it in and we have to get it right.
And that's the thing about it. Getting it in, but making sure it's right also.
Absolutely.
Taking up a lot of time when we're saying, hey, okay, we need this, we need that. You have systems in place, but things happen, you know? And sometimes, and Tracy does a great job of catching those things, you know? And then making sure everything, just imagine, you're talking about making sure that you have your personnel together, making sure you have your finance report together from the finance director, making sure you have, you know, if transportation has something that they need in there. If our special population department has something that they need in there. This is something from everybody.
That's right.
On top of the fact that we might have to put a bid in or something and things like that. So a lot that goes in to the actual putting together of the board agenda. It's a lot.
It is.
And Tracy does a wonderful job of making sure that that, that happens, you know? It's just not snap your fingers and there it is.
No, and personnel is fluid.
Personnel is very fluid. Personnel is very fluid because you, you're adding something, then you might have to subtract something. You take something away. So that's where you have to have someone who, who does not get flustered, you know, stays even keel and, and just make sure that what we're doing is the right thing. That's where the appreciation comes in from me also because she makes my situation easier because of that, you know? And then we're able just to step in here as superintendent, as board and click on it and thumb through it for, as for what it is and then
That's right.
Able to function. And again, that's not even talking about the special call meeting. That's not even talking about the hearings and things like that.
Those are a whole separate.
That's a whole different set of things.
And sometimes they run into the regular board meeting. So it can be, it's challenging, but it's, it's, it's fun and it, you know, it keeps me on my toes and, and, but you know, it, it calls for a lot of flexibility.
Everyone's not built for it.
It's, it's, it's not, you know? And I do, I, you know, I get concerned sometime about who's gonna walk in here if, and do this because you do have to have a certain type of, of, it requires a certain character and a certain ability to, to, to not, to work between whatever's going on.
Do a variety of things.
Yeah, you, you have to be very flexible and be able to handle multiple things. You gotta be able to multitask because it is, this whole office is.
It's a living organism.
It is. You know, some people walk in and they'll say, oh, it's so quiet in here. And I'm like, there are a lot of things going on that you, you can't even imagine. It may sound quiet, but.
Yeah, and that's, 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 you know, that, that's old to everyone that's here. Again, we, we are, we're the type that's standing in the gap for, for everyone, you know, right now. So a good example right now, like most of our finance department is, business department, business office is out at a conference. So, you know, we have to make sure everything continues to go. And everyone is, is, is right there on guard and ready to make that happen.
That is so true.
But Tracy's leading the way.
We have, we have, we have a great team here and, and we are like a family. But that's, you know, and, and Dr. Henderson, he, he wants us to do the job, but also he wants us to be, take care of ourselves and take care of our family. Because he let us know, you can't do it if you worried about what's going on with a child or a parent. So we, we really do work together to support one another and we're a team, you know? We try to come, you know, bridge that gap when there's someone that has to be out. Like he said, the business office is not here. If there is a call that comes in, I can text Mr. Martin or I can text Ms. Kathleen or whoever that pertains to that issue and say, can we get something done before you get back here?
Now, you make your family, so we're gonna go roll into your little, little personal side here. So let's, let's talk about food.
Ooh, yeah.
Here we go.
Well, I tell you what.
Okay, so I'm gonna just ask you this, couple of things. What's your favorite meal? The go-to meal that Tracy has? If, if, if you had your one last meal, what would that be?
My, if I had my one last meal?
One last meal.
Ooh, wait, I'm gonna say if I had my one last meal, it would probably be pancakes. Yes.
I did not expect that answer. Somebody, somebody liked that answer, you know? I did not expect that answer, really.
It would be pancakes.
Okay. Simple pancakes. Nothing else? You just want some pancakes?
I just want some pancakes and some syrup and a glass of milk, which I can't digest very well, but I'm gonna drink it.
Okay, well, let me take it a step. What kind of syrup?
Oh, you know what? I buy the Walmart brand Original syrup. I think that's what it's called. Walmart, yeah, it's a Walmart, it's a store brand, it's original. It's not Buddy's, Butter's worth. I don't want no, I don't want it to say butter.
No, see, you being from Franklin County, the country. I expected you to say cane syrup or Blackburn syrup. I didn't expect what you just said.
For a biscuit. It's too heavy for my pancake.
Okay. Wow, I didn't expect you to turn it off when you said that. Okay, okay, okay. All right. So, all right, your go-to meal as far as cooking, cooking?
If I have to.
This is my five-star, you know, top of the line meal that I cook. What is that?
That gets me rave reviews.
Sure.
If I do, if I do fried chicken.
Okay.
Collard greens, sweet potato yams, homemade macaroni and cheese and cornbread with iced tea. That is, I'm gonna, they just gonna praise me for that. Right, and it doesn't have to be like, like drumsticks or thighs. It can be chicken, you know, fried chicken tenders or just a breast. Cause my husband, that's the only thing he eats, is breast. He might do a drumette here or there, but if he eats fried chicken.
Right.
It's gonna have to be the breast.
So it doesn't matter the type of chicken, it just needs to be fried chicken, so to say. Well, you said, you said tenders also, tenders also. Now, you mentioned greens. That's a process.
Yes.
It's a process.
I don't want them out the bag. I want them out the ground.
Talk about the process then, cause I, what's the process? Everybody has their different ways of doing greens, so what's the process? You said you don't want them out the bag. You want, you wanna be in the, okay, go through the process.
So, you know, a, a good season, good winter season, David has planted collards and.
See, I have some planted. Okay, so you can step right outside?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And, you know, I let him know I'm gonna cook collards today. So he'll get up and, you know, go out there and pick them fresh.
Okay.
And sometimes we both all go pick them in, but he'll pick them and I will cut them up and wash them. That's how I do mine. I wash them about four or five times.
Thoroughly.
Thoroughly. And now, David prefers, I like to do like smoked turkey necks or something like that. David prefers bacon. He prefers me that fry that bacon in that pot and throw them greens over there, you know? I do a little, I may do a little broth or, and with water too, but not much because, you know, they make their own, their own juice. And I do a little vinegar, a little sugar, a little salt, some pepper. I don't know if any, I love pepper in my greens. To me, they, to me, pepper really brings the flavor out in greens. But.
What you cook that?
Um, if they tender, I'm gonna say about forty-five minutes.
So you like them with a little snap to them or do you like them just wilted, just real tender? So you're not cooking them down? Cause see, some people like to cook theirs for hours. That's where you're gonna get them where they're just real, you know, wilted down, real soggy and such. So you like yours that can really stand up, that's still got a little, little shape to it?
Yes. David likes it with a little, still with a little shape to it that, because he's like, um, don't cook the nutrients out on Tracy. So I do and my girls seem to like them that way, so, but it's, it's a slam dunk.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a meal I would say, a lot of people would probably say, yeah, that's, that's, that's a nice go-to meal. So in your private time, pastime and things like that, what do you do to just relax? To get away, you know, to just relax and just, hey, this is what I do when I'm trying to just relax?
When I want to relax, it's going to be a movie. I'm going to.
What type?
Drama.
Like drama?
And with a little action to it.
A little action.
And I'm, my plan is to like, I want nobody at the house. I want to get on the couch with a cup of coffee. You know I love my coffee. And more than, more, more than likely, I've already found that movie. Been waiting for this perfect day. And I'm gonna watch that movie. And I have been known to, to lose a whole Sunday.
Been watching?
Been, just, yeah, just watching movies. You know, major headache because I have been watching movies all day. But that's what I, I do now, you know, I used to be a big reader. But I'm seen to be suffering from ADHD or I got something going on. I can't seem to focus for no more than ten or fifteen minutes at a time.
It might be that coffee.
It could be.
It might be that caffeine you're putting in your body, you know, that, that could be what.
I do sip on that a lot, darling.
Hey, I'm not judging. I'm just saying, the coffee flows here in central office. It does. And it doesn't matter what time, morning, noon, or evening, the coffee flows.
That's right. We're some serious coffee drinkers here in the central office.
They are. They are.
Not so much, but we are.
I don't from time to time. But I'm glad that you have something that you do, you know? And I, and I, and I emphasize this to everyone. Make sure you have something that you can do to relax and take yourself away. What we do is, is very pressure-filled, pressure-packed. You have to have something that in your, in your, in your pastime.
That's correct.
In your, in your away time to, you know, relax with. So that's, that's good that you have something because if you didn't, if you said, I, I don't have any, I wouldn't say you need to find something.
Right, right.
And I'll tell everyone out there, make sure you have something in your pastime that can really allow you to relax. Whether it is reading a book or not or watching, it's fine. Just find something to do with yourself though. But. But you did a great job of kinda putting the curtain back and showing everyone behind the scenes all that goes into what you do, you know? So, I wanna make sure people understand something about Tracy, that I'm so appreciative of her and all that she does, um, for me, for this district in itself, which is why I wanted to make sure that we, we, we brought her on the podcast and spotlight her and let her know how much we appreciate what she does, and so she can tell her story. And so, when people call here, they'll know the face behind the voice, and they'll understand everything that she puts into this wonderful district in helping us be the best that we can be. So, I just wanna personally thank you so much. I know that if I had gave you ample time to prepare for this, you would have ran away, you would not have allowed me to do this, but which is why I waited until the evening on yesterday to tell you this.
He sure did.
But I appreciate you accepting the opportunity, and I hope you all now appreciate Tracy Williams more, so.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
Thank you so much, alright?
Alright.
Alright, now that brings the conclusion to our latest episode of the Panther Podcast. Thank you all again for joining us. My name's Dr. Rod Henderson, and keep in mind that it's always a great day to be a Panther. Thank you all.
Thanks for tuning in to the Panther Podcast. Subscribe, like, and share to be notified for future episodes. We'll talk to you soon.